All right, so we will call it order, the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, November 7th to order. If I could ask everyone to please stand. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Could I have a roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Steven Batson.
Here.
Alex Delicole.
Here.
Zach Grudy.
Here.
Karen Munster.
Here.
Owen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Rattner.
Here. All right, so everybody is here. Our agenda tonight, we will have, for our educational presentation, there was just lots of good news last week, so we'll celebrate some of that this evening. Nothing specific on the president's report, we'll have updates from our students, which we always enjoy, superintendent's report, we'll approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month, brief updates from program personnel, facility and finance. No update from property, but we will have an executive session, correct? Or you can update.
Uh, yes.
Well, nothing on the agenda for the property committee, but we will convene an executive session, right? Okay. Sito?
Karen Aitken.
Next one.
Next one, okay. And Jim, anything from?
Yeah.
Okay, so brief mention there, we will convene an executive session this evening, and the topic of that is purchase or lease of real property. We will not be taking any action this evening following that meeting. All right? So, educational presentation.
I think, let's flip the two on the agenda, and let's do the student recognition first. So Marina, I think we're turning it over to you, yes?
Yeah, that's fine. Good evening, everyone. As you know, it's been a very busy and exciting weekend to be a Wildcat, and one of the reasons for that is our volleyball team took us on an amazing tour to get to the state championship match at ISU, and along the way, we saw some exciting games that kept at least me on the edge of my seat. Volleyball is not an easy sport to watch, let me just say that. But at the state meet, what is so amazing in finishing second is that it is the highest finish in LHS history for a girls volleyball team. So I want to say, "Congrats to your success." I'm sure they were a little tired today at school, but of course, they are, their energetic selves here today, and I'd like to introduce head coach Loica, to introduce the team and the accolades they deserve, give them the accolades they deserve. So if you would come up here, Coach Loica?
They're all a little tired.
Yeah.
Just wow, it was a crazy ride, and something at the beginning of the season I don't know that a lot of people outside of this group thought was possible, but as we found out in the game of volleyball, anything is possible, and these girls worked incredibly hard, and we're a team that has accomplished something that no other team has in our school, in our program, set the bar pretty high. There's one run left, and that's quite a challenge for underclassmen and future teams to try to accomplish. So, very proud of them, the school and community support that we received has been unbelievable, and we really appreciate that, and every little thing in volleyball, as Marina mentioned, really helps. Momentum is a huge thing, and just having some extra people in our corner to cheer us on was great, and our fans trekked all over the state following us the last three weeks, so it's been outstanding, we really appreciate that.
One of the things I noticed, as I said to Coach Loica, you always seem calm, no matter how, no matter how crazy you get. And he looked at me and he said, "Somebody's got to appear calm." So sorry for interrupting.
The girls know, the girls know that's not true, but I can make it look good. If I had, if I had her, it would have been coming out, so I just take it off, please. But yeah, I'd like to introduce them very quickly, and we appreciate you having us here. I'll go seniors first. Michaela Faber, one of our defensive players, come on up. Alex Basler. Francesca Fusco. Liz Apgar. And then we have Erin Dunleavy, Caroline Free, Ashley Croft, Natalie Vogel, Anna Lilidall, Jackie Widmark, Hannah Zerwos, Annika Hawkinson, Sinead Prentice, and Morgan O'Brien. And that's everybody. We're missing a couple who couldn't be here tonight, but this is your state runner-up in Class 4A for 2014 volleyball.
Yes.
All right, Dr. Scott's camera, you guys can take a picture as well. And then we get a chance to shake a hand. This is Dr. Grudy, he can work front of us.
Look over here, her, sorry.
All right, Dr. Scott's camera.
Okay, parents, come on up.
You can add this description.
It's a good thing, yes, you will.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Am I the last one?
Wonderful, wonderful.
Before you all leave, I'll stand over here. You know, we know that your daughters haven't arrived where they're at without a lot of sacrifice on your part and support as well, so we always like to take a, we love doing this, is our favorite part of our board meetings, is doing student recognition, but we also want to take a brief minute and thank you for your support of your daughters, for getting them to school, for driving them all over the place. All the years they've played club volleyball, they've been involved in that, to get them to this level, and for your support of Coach Loica and, you know, his staff, as they've worked with the girls, and the outcome is, is obviously wonderful, but it takes all those things to make that happen, so we want to give you a round of applause tonight, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to continue with good news?
We are, we have a little more recognition under the educational presentation, and of course, we'll have more good news when we get to that part of the agenda, but another great celebration for District 128, Community High School District 128 is pleased to announce that it has been selected as one of the 2014 Chicago Tribune Top 100 Workplaces. At an event held in Chicago Thursday, November 13th, District 128 was named sixth among all mid-sized companies, placing the district among the top 20 companies of the top 100 overall. The Chicago Tribune published a complete list of the top 100 workplaces this past Friday. The Chicago Tribune Top 100 Workplaces are determined based solely on anonymous employee feedback. The employee survey was conducted by Workplace Dynamics LLP, a leading research firm on organizational health and employee engagement. Workplace Dynamics conducts regional top places, top workplaces programs with 40 major publishing partners across the United States, including, of course, the Chicago Tribune. In total, 1,813 companies were invited to participate in the process. Of those, 240 companies completed the survey. Survey companies employ almost 200,000 people in the Chicago area, of which 125,000 received surveys, and 78,000 responded. The top 100 companies were divided into three categories, small, with fewer than 250 employees, mid-sized, 250 had 999 employees, and large, 1,000 and more. On behalf of the district and everyone here, we are honored to have been selected for this prestigious award, and more importantly, we are so very proud of our board, administration, teachers and support staff, parents, and communities, and of course, our amazing students for making District 128, Libertyville, and Vernon Hills High Schools such special places to work. And in recognition, all of our employees in the district received a special T-shirt, which Mary worked in designing, which has not only the District 128 logo, but the top workplaces, the official top workplaces logo, and we'd like to stop for a minute and distribute T-shirts to the board, and also our student board representatives, because you're part of the team at the board table, and give those to you, so you can wear them with great pride. We had some great staff pictures taken in the buildings today, with people wearing their shirts, and you know, we encourage the staff to do that, they're creative like they always are, so we have some great photos that we can share with the board later. So, let me take a moment and pass the shirts out.
Now, does everybody got their shirts?
Okay, so here's what everyone has to do for the camera now. Everyone hold your shirt up, and let's let Stuart get a good shot, and congratulations to everybody in the district. This is a nice validation of what culture we seek to have in the district, and it's really validated that, so congratulations to everybody. Okay, Pat, that concludes the educational presentation for tonight.
Okay, thanks, good job. Congratulations to everybody, that was a great event last year. President's report, really nothing specific to highlight, um, still student school board, so we'd like to go first.
Sure.
All right, so for Vernon Hills, I'll start with the student activities. The variety show is coming up on December 4th, and we're trying to raise money for COV Alliance and to send our sisters to school in Uganda. So, as part of student council, we're trying to get donations and door prizes to get more students to come, so the more students that come, the more money that goes to our sister school, and everyone's like very supportive in the community, like different restaurants, they're like willing to give us door prizes, and it's nice to know that like everyone's so supportive of like, of like our intentions to help our sister school. And auditions are coming up on the 24th, so hopefully we have some wonderful acts to come. For Fine Arts Choir is preparing for the magical dessert, and what they do is they put on a shelf, and then they're like, "Pee-doo," it's really nice. Orpheus Choir is preparing for their concert, which is tomorrow, and it'll be really exciting, we have a senior solo, she's playing Chopin on piano, it's amazing. And Festival is coming up, which is on Thursday, and that includes us playing with the middle schoolers, which will be fun. The middle schoolers come to school, they come here, they rehearse with us, with the guest conductor, so, and it's nice for them to see like what it's like to play in high school, and they're encouraged to play in high school, and they're able to like get advice from us, because we're all STEM partners, so everyone's like paired up with middle school, and like there's a really nice connection, and they're all excited. Jazz band has started, and they're preparing for the variety show, they're usually the first act to come on, so that'll be also very exciting. And the IMEA District Festival was last weekend, and it was very fun, it was a different world for me. It was very competitive, and it was nice to see that like, there are so many students from District 128 that like I recognize, and it's like nice to know that like we are so fortunate, that like our programs are so strong, and so hopefully, we will get the results of whether or not we made Allstate coming up in December, and Allstate's in January, so we'll see who makes that. Athletics, winter sports have begun, and many people are very excited about that. There are four cross-country runners that represented Illinois at the Mid Eastern Cross-Country Run, and it was a very like high honor for them to be able to run there. And then girls basketball won in their cabinet treat, which allowed the girls to bond and for the upcoming season, and they're currently in their basketball game right now, so, in a tournament, so with that, I'll turn over to Libertyville.
Okay, so as you all know, Libertyville had a very exciting weekend in sports. So on Saturday, we had several of our varsity swimmers who qualified for state. We had two school records broken, one in the 100-yard breast stroke, and the other one in the 400-yard freestyle relay. So the state meet will be this Friday and Saturday at Evanston High School, so they're very excited for that. Obviously, girls volleyball, who took second place in state, the highest finish ever for Libertyville High School, girls volleyball. And our football team is also, has also defeated Fenwick this past Saturday, 28 to 10, and they're going to be going to the quarterfinals of, oh, that was in the quarterfinals, of the IHSA playoffs. So they'll be playing in the semifinals against Cary Grove this Saturday, November 22nd, from, at 3:00 at Libertyville, so we'll, hopefully, we'll be able to make it to state then. And then also, so fall athletics are just kind of wrapping up right now, so our athletic awards night will be this Wednesday, and winter sports are coming into full swing. Many sports have had their tryouts already, and the boys' basketball team is even hosting a Tip Off Madness, which will be this Thursday. So it's basically just kicking off the LHS Boys Basketball season, and it'll like be a scrimmage with like free pizza, and lots of exciting events, and possibly free bowls tickets as well. And then for clubs, National Honor Society is now having a supplies drive for the pads shelters, so that's been going on for a few weeks. And then WISH has also begun, there are many fundraisers, like lots of baked goods sales, lots of Jamba Juice sales, lots of Chipotle sales, and just a lot of really creative, just fundraising going on, so.
I just have a couple of anonymous notes, I think Gina pretty much covered everything. We're almost three-quarters of the way through the semester, and I always look at those progress reports, and it's pretty incredible how fast the semester goes by. We also just finished up our production of Spamalot, I don't know how many people were able to see it, but I heard it was really good. Football is doing very well, and I don't know if anybody's heard this, but our volleyball team got second. Our college and career center is hosting a number of upcoming events, including the popular Cats to College event for juniors tomorrow night, and College Cats Return, which is a new event that's going to bring former Libertyville students that are in college to sort of share their experiences. And finally, I just wanted to congratulate the district on the Workplace Award. I think that not only are teachers teaching in a great environment here, but students are learning in a really great environment. So that's all I have.
All right, so I mean, just in time then, a light round of applause, I believe, is in order for the district, for their top, top, I guess, I was on the, sit down. All right, so nicely done, Alex, the old staff, and the administration's special. So I'm just going to go over the big three for my extracurriculars anyway. So first off, on United Nations, we had our first out-of-state conference of the year, that was the Brown University Symposium of United Nations, our Bruison, it was November 7th to 9th. We left on Friday morning, a few weeks ago, about a week ago, we came back Saturday evening. We did a, we did a really good job, we had sophomore delegate Alejandro Garcia Escobar, who received Best Advocate for his community, all the status of women. We had one commendation and two honorable mentions, overall, very good showing for our first conference, our first large conference of the year. In terms of math team, we're off to a great start for the season, we're in top 10 for the state, which is where we probably want to be going into the state competition in early February, and then later in May. So so far, so good, we'll see how the year goes. We have two really excellent math team members this year, Alex Thankie in the junior class, and Maxwell Fung in the sophomore class, who are kind of shooting for some of the high level national competitions, so when we get to that season around April and March, we're excited to see where that leads. And then finally, in terms of debate team, we're hosting our first ever in-house debate tournament this year, on December 13th, that's a Saturday, December 12th, I'll double check the dates, it's a Saturday though, on that weekend, and it's part of the, the local circuit for all the teams in the area, we usually do four tournaments a year, and that includes schools like Schaumburg, Anderson, Buffalo Grove, Carl Sandberg, and us, among a lot of others. So there's usually four local tournaments a year, including all those schools, and usually hosted by respectively Schaumburg, Frem, Buffalo Grove, and Carl Sandberg, and Buffalo Grove is usually the December tournament, but Buffalo Grove, for a number of reasons, couldn't host this year, so we're actually hosting, which is going to be quite exciting, because debate as an activity has been growing a lot in the last couple of years, and now it's up to several hundred members at every competition, so it's going to be a pretty large tournament. Logistically, we're going to see how it goes with the first tournament ever hosted by Alastair, but looking forward to it, it's going to be an exciting time, and so far, so good, and just a flash of news. All right, thank you.
All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, as if we haven't had enough good news already, we're going to have a little bit more this evening, which is always exciting. As I think the board knows, and certainly our staff knows, we often say to the community, we don't generally seek out external recognition, but over the course of the school year, because our students do great work, our teachers and staff and administrators are doing great work with kids, we are often kind of picked out by national ranking companies, and we received another such honor this past week. NICH, a nationally-based school district and school rating service founded originally as college prowler out of Carnegie Mellon University, considering the following categories: academics, teacher quality, administration and policies, educational outcomes, resources and facilities, health and safety, student culture and diversity, extracurricular, sports and fitness, and yes, even food for the students. Has rated District 128, LHS, and VHHS as follows. LHS received an A-plus overall rating, and nationally, they were ranked 42nd out of 14,400 US public high schools. That's in the top .002% of all range US public high schools. We were also obviously ranked 10th in the state of Illinois. VHHS received an A-plus overall, and they were ranked 29th out of 14,400 high schools, again, in the top .002% of all range US public high schools, and they were ranked 9th in all Illinois public high schools. District 128 received an A-plus overall, and was nationally ranked 108th out of 8,738 US public school districts, so in the top .01% of US public high schools. So, and there's more here, but we just kind of wanted to hit the highlights, it gives you a sense of the continued really great work that our staff is doing with our kids and the support that we're providing for them, because at the end of the day, you can only have these types of rankings if you're, if all of your kids are being more successful year over year. So that's very exciting for us, because again, it's kind of an external barometer, in this case, of many factors that we would look at ourselves to see how we're doing in preparing our kids and serving our kids to ensure their growth and increased achievement. So congratulations to everyone on that. And the following students were named, LHS November Students of the Month, Hillary Verba, Kath Kate Vittor, Stephanie McLaughlin, Taylor Sloan, Emily Williams, Dolores Palmieri, Eve Spinoza, Jack Stuckman, Hannah Zerwos, Brooke Zant, Andy Venish, James He, and Mackenzie Cook. District 128 welcomed more than 300 senior residents of the district to its annual senior dinner and show at VHHS on November 6th, following dinner, which was served by VHHS NHS members, and District 128 staff, the seniors enjoyed a performance of Guys and Dolls. And we will have our next senior dinner, and winter holiday show coming up at Libertyville in a couple of weeks. The VHHS Junior State of America, JSJSA Club, attended the Fall State Conference, November 7th to 9th, in Madison, Wisconsin. JSA is a student-led organization that encourages students to engage in political debate, discussion, and internships. At the conference, the VHHS Club members received seven Best Speaker Awards, which is the most, which is the most the club has ever received at a single conference. VHHS Best Speaker Award winners were Ashwini Deshpande, Oliver Loom, Michael Kokanis, Misha Boganov, Manik Trichat, and Subham Patel, who won two awards. The club is sponsored by VHHS Social Studies teachers, Eileen Orzoff, Veronica, and Matt Clifford. A graphic designed by LHS student Colin Morbido was selected as the winner in the District 128 Mission Statement Student Graphic Design Contest. The team representing District 28 students, support staff, teachers and administrators, and the Board of Education selected Colin's design, which will be displayed throughout the district and used in District 128 printed materials. Runners up in the contest were John McInerney from LHS, and Lilia Biarski from VHHS. And I think several of us sat on that committee, and the students did an amazing job with that, we certainly have some talented art and design students in the district. Finally, on our regular good news tonight, the District 128 Foundation for Learning hosted their annual premiere event this past Friday, and I think we had a little over 150 area residents attend the event, a silent auction, and we had a team of folks from the foundation volunteer supporting them, and just did an amazing job on the event. It was really first-rate and a very special event. From the district staff, Mary Toddrick and Carol Scoot did just outstanding, over-the-top work with the foundation to prepare for this event. So, we'll let you know next month how we netted out in terms of profit, but again, the mission of the foundation is to enrich and enhance the educational experiences for our students, they've given well over $120,000 to our teachers for innovation grants, and every year, those grants really become more defined and, and more awesome, so it'll be fun to report on that in several weeks. And finally, good news tonight, I want to share with you an email that Coach Mike Jones received from a parent at Fenwick High School. I'm going to leave the parent's name out for their confidentiality, but this is just really impressive, and this was unsolicited, following a football game at Fenwick on Saturday. Coach Jones, you don't know me, but I am a Fenwick dad, and I was on the chain gang Saturday night for the game. I felt compelled to write to you to express how impressed I was with you, your staff, and your players. My son is on the Fenwick team, and he is my third Fenwick football player, so that has given me many opportunities to be on the chain gang and see many teams and coaches over the years, some good, some not so good, and some bad. You and yours are at the top of that list. I heard nothing but positive comments coming from both your coaches and your players. Not once did I hear or see any whining from anyone. I don't think I heard any profanity at all, with the possible exception of me and the other guys on the chain gangs. As you know, we won that game, so you maybe can understand that. When one of our players went down in the fourth quarter, and it, and it looked like a possible knee injury, two of your coaches quietly urged him to get up in a helpful way. It was good sportsmanship and pure class. Behavior like that comes from only one place, the top. You have obviously set a great example, and you should be proud. As you undoubtedly already know, the reason we want our sons to play this game is to prepare them for life and to teach them how to become young men. It seems to me that you are doing just that. You have a fine team, and I wish you success in the rest of the playoffs. That's a pretty powerful letter, and Marina and I were talking earlier, you know, we talked about developing a culture, we talked about caring for students, we talked about going the extra mile over and above that, but I mean, this is, this is just really a nice testament to work that a group of our folks are doing with our young people in the district, so kudos to Mike Jones and his staff. Mike is also a math teacher at the high school as well, obviously doing a great job with the kids, and it's just kind of icing on the cake that we are in the final four of all 7A schools, so again, congratulations to Mike and his team for a job well done.
And I think that's the second time, at least in the history that I've been here, that we've had such a letter, so.
Yes.
When you start to see a pattern of that, it's even, even better, I would say.
Yeah, it's, it's really awesome, and we, and we'll try, continue to try and share those when, you know, it's feasible to do that, but really powerful stuff. Under donation acknowledgements, we have one tonight from Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. Norbert Hanson in Vernon Hills. We want to thank them for donating a 2002 Honda Odyssey Sport Van to Vernon Hills High School. This was a free will donation, obviously no money was received by the donor. The vehicle will be used at Vernon Hills High School campus by the Automotive Technology Class, and will be junked once it is of no further use, so thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Hanson. And Pat, I have nothing under other tonight, so that concludes superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
Oh, Pat, one other thing. We do have an education, a college education student with us tonight, this is Nat in the back. Yeah, it's, it's really awesome, and we, and we'll try, continue to try and share those when, you know, it's feasible to do that, but really powerful stuff. Under donation acknowledgements, we have one tonight from Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. Norberg Hansen in Vernon Hills. We want to thank them for donating a two thousand and two Honda Odyssey Sport Van to Vernon Hills High School. This was a free will donation, obviously no money was received by the donor. The vehicle will be used at Vernon Hills High School campus by the Automotive Technology Class and will be junked once it is of no further use. So, thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Hansen. And Pat, I have nothing under other tonight, so that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
Oh, Pat, one other thing. We do have an education, college education student with us tonight, this is Nat in the back, and Nat's doing an observation as part of one of his education classes. So, Nat, welcome to One Twenty-Eight, and come back and see us if you need to do more observation hours.
All right, welcome. All right, so next, the consent vote agenda is listed, it was reviewed earlier in the month. Could I ask for motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
I'd like to approve the consent vote agenda.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So, we're in the personnel committee, Chair Personnel.
Okay, the first thing we have is the two thousand fifteen sixteen proposed school district calendar. We discussed that in committee, looking for motion to approve that.
I move to approve the two thousand fifteen sixteen proposed school district calendar discussed.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have board policies. We have seven of them, they're for second reading and adoption tonight. Unless there are any, if there are any questions, let me know, otherwise, we'll give motion to approve the second reading and adoption.
So, moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
I think that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Facilities and Finances, Chairman Datsun.
Thank you, Dr. Grudy. We have one item on the Facilities and Finance Committee, and that is the approval for a purchase of the, of a train building automation system. It's an integration project using the train VAS system, purchased through the Cooperative Purchasing Network. So, do you guys have any other?
I make a motion that we approve that train VAS integration project through the Co-op.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
The only comment might be that we've already received the grant, that would offset the substantial amount.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's two hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and four dollars and ninety-five cents is what we've been allocated toward the grant. And also, I'd like to add that Alex did meet with us last week with my two gentlemen, and he went over the proposal.
Well, we feel good about it.
Was it starting from like four, four hundred something?
Yes. What we'd like, the whole approval is four hundred, comes out to four hundred and seventy thousand and change. That includes twenty thousand dollars for the air testing balancing, and also, there's a ten percent contingency included in that number. The only number you do not have in there is what the annual maintenance agreement will be, because we don't have that tied down yet, it'll be in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars. We currently have one now with LHS when trained, and that's sixteen thousand dollars, but this is more encompassing, so I'm, I'm confident that that will go up. And the payback is two-point-three years, and that's the number...
That I'm totally skeptical about, but I still think it's the right thing to do, and that, that payback, while it's maybe a few years longer than that, is still, it's still the right thing to do for the bill.
They claim ninety-five thousand dollars a year savings. If, given, you know, one way or the other, I look at that at two teaches. We can't pass that up, Bill. We gotta go.
I'm not skeptical, no, that's fine. I mean, every, you must be selling a lot of these systems, though, if that's really the case. So, we're starting four-seventy, minus the two-twenty-three grants, our net is about four, two-fifty.
Yes, sir. And we have in our capital plan, we put four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for them, so this, to me, is a good deal.
No, that's, that's okay.
And this, this basically takes what's now four disparate automation systems and combines them under one unified to better control the HVAC system.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we've had our motion at second, any other comments? And for roll call please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Datsun?
Aye.
Dolly Polly?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.